I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. You roll call please.
Lois Tiley.
Present.
Diane Dennis.
Here.
Richard Horner.
Here.
Michael Nesbit.
Present.
Kathy Harris.
Yes.
And Sarah Tylee.
Here.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments to the agenda. I would just note that Resolution 22-8 is in front of you.
Do I hear approval, motion for approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Support?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Any public announcements? Apparently not. Move on to the Spicer Report.
Good evening. I'll make this pretty short. We've kind of wrapped up the hydro back portion of the drinking water asset management grant. Contractor came back a couple of weeks ago and did some touch-up cleanup work. John, Don, I think they got that mostly taken care of.
Yeah, far as we know, they wrapped it up.
As far as, as far as that project goes, we're holding on to retainage until we ensure grass growth and everything squared away before we release it. And that portion of the project will be wrapped up. As Hart said, there's a resolution in front of you for a category B grant, which we'll be working on getting applied for in the next week or so. That's for a $250,000 grant to improve roads in conjunction with the Phase One project. So, so between the category B and then working on the Phase One, we should, we should be getting those preliminary estimates of cost wrapped up here in the next month or so. Maple Street Pump Station, met with Don this month, proposed a couple of options. We're working on coordinating meeting with Don and Hart to sit down and go through and see which route we want to go down as far as the, with the pump station work goes. Other than that, Don, do you have any additional comment? Or Hart?
Oh, we're meeting up Tuesday morning.
Yeah, Tuesday morning to go over the category B stuff. Should be pretty straightforward. Like I said, we're kind of grouped in that in conjunction with that Phase One water main project. And take a shot at getting an additional $250,000 worth of funding. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I just, I guess I do have a question. The article, where should we expect to see that? Or should I share it? Is it fair game?
Yeah, the article will be coming out in the straight line, which you guys get sent.
Okay.
And then as far as the article, we put in MWEA, I'm not sure when that'll be published, but I'll sure you get it. I'll make sure you get it.
Okay. I'll share that article with you guys this week.
If there's no further questions on the Spicer Report, let's move on to the council minutes of May 11th to 2022. Any questions on those? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the council minutes of May 11th, 2022.
Two seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Move on to the commission and committee reports. The first is the DDA authority, meeting of June 3rd, 2022. Any question on those minutes? If not, let's move on to the Park and Recreation Committee of May 18th minutes. Are there any questions on those minutes? Apparently not. Do I hear a motion to accept and file the committee reports presented?
I'll make a motion.
Support?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Moving on to communications. You have your review magazine. Any highlights in that that you wish to expound upon?
I have one.
Pardon?
I have one.
Please speak up. I'm glad to hear you.
On page 16. There's youth involvement. Did you read that article in Charlestown? The kids, uh, the seniors in the high school there, every year now they're making, for the summer months, they're picking a project in downtowns and working on it. They're, it's part of like their program for the year. I mean, just a, it's just a short one. Says one effective program that has garnered a lot of attention is our junior Main Street program, which allows local high school seniors the opportunity to get involved in improving the downtown. The program is now in its sixth year and every year Lindsay Dotson, Main Street DDA Executive Director, goes to the high school students to identify a project that can be done within the school year. The students do all the fundraising, planning, and outreach. Every year it's a different group, a different interest, and it has been incredible to see what they can accomplish. This Dotson goes to the students every year and says, what do you think would make our downtown better for you? I think that might be something we should talk to the kids at school.
Who heads this up?
This is a...
Executive Director of the DDA.
Yeah.
So this is something I could work with.
Lindsay Dotson, Main Street DDA.
So the Michigan Downtown Development Authority, or MDA, was in Charlestown this past weekend, so I went up and met with Lindsay. Uh, this is something we could probably do with National Honor Society Kids, something with Mr. Wiki involvement. Could be a great program to start. I think junior year is probably best. Seniors, some, sometimes are checked out, senioritis. I'm not gonna give examples of beautification day, but a lot of them leave early, have other things to do, have other sports, after-school things. So I think that's something I would be happy to work with Mr. Wiki on.
I thought it might be a nice idea to, um, a way to get the kids involved in helping in the community, you know, and still spruce them up downtown too. It's an interesting article.
Any other highlights from the review magazine?
I would just point out, point three, the completion of the project demonstrates some important takeaways. Point three, fundraising is so much easier when their high school students make the ask rather than us. Hard to say no to kids.
Anything else? Let's subject move on to the payment of claims. Are there any questions on the payment of claims for the month? If not, do I hear a motion to pay the claims?
I'll make a motion to approve the payment of claims for $158,004.31.
Support?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to new business. We have kayak launch. What do you have on that, Hartman?
Well, I'm happy to announce that the DDA has approved the kayak launch at Easy Dock towards the Village of St. Charles. Uh, we'll be going at Lumberjack Park. Um, I hope to have further details on construction and completion in the near future. I would add that the state bank has committed $10,000 towards the project. Uh, the Parks Committee is recommending use of $2,000 or about 10% of their yearly, uh, budget to appropriate towards the cause. And the DDA will be picking up the rest. That said, uh, I will be meeting with the state bank next week to go over signage. They want it to be called the Village of St. Charles State Bank Kayak Launch. I think we need to leave room for other businesses or entities that would like to also donate to the cause on the signage. But I'm excited to announce that St. Charles is getting a kayak launch. Canoe kayak ADA compliant. It'll be pretty neat.
That's good. Nice. Good to hear. How will that be in the future?
Been a long time in the making.
Uh, I'm hoping it's this year.
Do we need a motion from the council on that?
Uh, just approval of appropriating $2,000 from the Parks Budget would be nice.
Do I hear a motion that we appropriate that money from the Parks?
I'll make a motion. We use the $2,000 from the Parks Committee, uh, toward the kayak dock.
Support on that?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Something for the future. Moving on to parks signs.
Uh, some of the signs in Coal Miners Park are pretty worn and, uh, we're kind of looking at some new signage. Uh, we discussed in length what we'd like to see. For example, this is the current, the Pine's Disc Golf Course. It's weathered, old, ratty. People's use. I feel like a teacher right now. It's kind of fun. Uh, so we're looking at updating that sign, uh, as well as the skate park rules, which, you know, it's not much of a skate park. It's pickleball as well, which led into the discussion of, we need kind of a, uh, a key or something when you come into the park to show people what's where, what field numbers are, what, what facilities or amenities we have. So we're working on that as well. Uh, so for now, we're gonna update the Ken Fulton sign, which is pretty ratty with something aluminum and plastic that'll handle the weather a little bit better. It'll now look like this. It updates with our current signage that's been going in, that we've been putting in since a little before my time. Uh, but to stay consistent, a little continuity and, uh, so the Parks Committee approved this sign as well as, um, let me find it, a new sign for the disc golf course, which will look like this. It'll be rather large and it'll have all the holes on it, kind of just updating signage to help those visiting as we are trying to get into the business of hosting disc golf tournaments. See them everywhere else and they're raising a ton of funds for park use, so try to piggyback with Sam Mayer on that. So, uh, they approved $750 in signage for these two and we'll keep working on improving the parks. Eventually I'd like to improve, uh, the parking space at Coal Miners if you go down there during a Little League, uh, night with four games going on. Yeah, four games. It's a zoo. It's a mess. And so Don and myself will work on a plan and, and look at maybe expanding the parking lot and maybe some asphalt next year so that we can get a fourth row in there and kind of organize it a little bit. But, um, so just looking for approval of the 750 from the Parks Committee to approve these two signs.
I'll make a motion. We approve the 750 in park signs.
Is support for that motion?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Any other discussion on this? Let's move on to Resolution 22-7, vacating the alleys in the JH Summers Coal Company subdivision.
So in 1904, JH Summers Coal Company subdivision, um, over on Henshaw Street, created this, uh, in Mr. Robert Hensel's driveway. Let me get this out really fast. This whole alley that goes across the street as well. Mr. Hensel wants to update his driveway. I think he wants the asphalt, but he can't get approval because it's not his land, even though it's his driveway. Because it's still platted to the coal company from 1904. So we hunted for about, I'd say, six months trying to figure out who owned it to, if we owned it, we could easily relinquish it. We don't own it. Summers did. They're no longer a company, so we are now relinquishing it to Mr. Hensel so he can have his driveway back. Uh, Rob Gross helped out on this as well as our attorney Gary Campbell to draft the resolution. He will be very happy to hear this, as well as his daughter.
Do I hear a motion adopting 22-7?
I move to adopt 22-7.
Support.
Roll call.
Lois Tiley.
Yes.
Diane Dennis.
Yes.
Richard Horner.
Yes.
Michael Nesbit.
Yes.
Kathy Harris.
Yes.
And Sarah Tylee.
Yes.
Opposed? None. Motion's carried. Resolution is adopted. Moving on to the next item. It's Resolution 22-8, the category B grant.
Yep, so this is what, uh, Mitchell was talking about. A category B is state funding the Office of, MDOT Office of Economic Development. It's, uh, it's creating design as a stopgap measure to provide additional road funding to villages and small cities under 10,000 residents. The, you have to pay 50% of whatever you, you receive, um, and the maximum amount is $250,000. But we are trying to incorporate this into our Phase One. If you look and notice that it's, uh, gonna be Hosmer, Clinton, East Bell, and Charles Street, which is the Phase One water main upgrades that we'd like to do on the water system improvement. So, uh, anytime you can get a grant to have the rest of the state's residents help pay for our roads, I'm always supportive of that. We've gone after this grant a few years now, uh, in my time here, and we have not received it. Uh, but I think we have a better shot because they, they like to see projects on local roads that are paired with other infrastructure projects, so.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion for adoption of Resolution 22-8?
I'll make a motion. We adopt Resolution 22-8.
Roll call. Hard support. You guys support someone?
Yes.
Roll call.
Lois Tiley.
Yes.
Diane Dennis.
Yes.
Richard Horner.
Yes.
Michael Nesbit.
Yes.
Kathy Harris.
Yes.
And Sarah Tylee.
Yes.
Resolution 22-8, adopted. Moving on to the appointment to fill the vacancy on the council. I believe we have three participants or...
Three candidates.
Candidates that have given their life up. They're offering to give up their life. We'd like to take them one at a time?
Yeah, having a last name that starts with A, I always like to go in alphabetical order because it normally benefited me in school, unless it was like a math test or something.
We'll have them come up to the podium and...
Three minutes if they'd like to speak and, and maybe just, uh, tell us why, what, what they see as the number one pressing issue for the Village of St. Charles. I will add that I have been in their shoes before and did not get appointed and I was frustrated, so I ran for office to beat the lady that was appointed. And I, I'm worried, um, but it's nerve-wracking, but I appreciate your, your dedication to the community. Mr. Kendall.
My name is Jamie Kendall, a lifelong resident of St. Charles for the most part. Born and raised here in 1990, so I'm 32. And most of you know my father or my grandfather. I graduated from St. Charles High School in 2008. And there are so many great things about this community. Businesses that we have currently, that have been here for a while, are stable, they're great businesses, it's safe. We have that hometown feel, especially if you come to homecoming parades or the Morley Parade. I just recently started with Tri-Town Fire Department in September of 2021. I'm still a probationary firefighter. You know my dad, he's not a people person. And I followed that to a T for most of my life. And I just said, hey, you know what? I want to change it. I have three daughters and another on the way. Don't know what it is yet. But I want to give back to the community so I can make decision for my kids to stay in St. Charles easier. There's a lot of great things about this town and there's some things that we can change. One of them is obviously the residency. Half of my graduating classes probably not even in Saginaw County anymore. And I want to make that a harder choice for everybody to say, hey, why not stay versus why stay? And I think there's a lot of things that I can bring to the table that will help the decision. So I thank you for your time and consideration.
Just a moment. Please stick around for some questions. What is it that you feel that you can mostly contribute to this council?
Um. Don't take this the wrong way, but youth.
Pardon me?
Youth. Don't take it the wrong way.
You.
I mean, I, I have, I have a growing family. I have a growing family and my, my grandfather started a funeral home in 1950. I grew up with it. So I have a fairly good idea of what it is like running a small town business. I think I can bring that experience, that insight. I am a father. I local, work locally here now. I have a lot of experience. I just have, I have the drive. I'm willing and I'm eager. I just, I just want the best for my kids. And that's right here.
If you were to get appointed to the council, what would be like your personal interest or maybe any goals that you might have?
To bring, one goal would be to increase the residency. I want people to, that work at, next year, work at HSC. Um, I want them to say, hey, why not St. Charles instead of, why not Hemlock or Swan Valley? I want us to be the number one consideration. And whether that's by increasing stuff in the park or increasing our water structure, whatever it means, let's do it.
Anyone else have any questions of Mr. Kendall?
I have one, just one. Is there anything here in the, the community right now that you think should be addressed that's not being addressed?
Well, just last week, being away for, going for a walk, we usually walk later at night downtown area. Um, there was a couple of cracks in the Main Street sidewalk. And I think that area of town is the most visible. I know a lot of people that come to Secretary of State that don't live in the area. And I think that if there's one part of town you want to be spick and span top-notch, it's gotta be your downtown area. Whether that's getting addressed, I have no idea. I'm new to this. This is my first meeting. But there's a little things that make, make a difference.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Kendall.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Who was our next one?
Mr. Paulus. Hello. My name is Steve Paulus. A little bit about myself. Um, not really born and raised in St. Charles. I lived in Bryant, St. Charles Schools, you know, Miller, the other side. It doesn't exist. Been here for a good long while. Graduated with Mike in 2001 and, uh, after attending Central Michigan University, I accepted a position down in Greenville, South Carolina, where I spent approximately seven years learning, living, just seeing different ways of, of doing things. I was very fortunate that I was able to, uh, get a position back here in Saginaw. And of course, you know, my natural instinct is to move home, you know, be next to, uh, family. You know, a lot of people do know my late father. He's, you know, was a village council member for, you know, at least 10 years or more. But, uh, I'm just here because I want to continue my service. You know, I've been chairperson of the planning commission for, this will be my second term. And, uh, you know, I just wanna fulfill my duties, you know, as a member of the community. So, any questions, concerns, comments?
Anything in particular that you think that you can bring to this council?
I think the biggest thing is an outside view. I mean, not many people have necessarily lived outside of St. Charles, which is the most beautiful thing, because you want to stay here, live here and not leave. But I have, uh, you know, seen what it's like in other towns, what they have to offer and, you know, what St. Charles could look towards doing.
Is there anything specific that you would want to?
I don't have to agree with Mr. Kendall. Uh, I know a lot of us are here because that's where our family is. But I would love to help build upon what we've already done and build a community that people want to come to. Like I, I want them to have reasons that St. Charles is where they want to be. You know, you have your Hemlocks, your Thomas Townships. There's plenty of reasons to be there. Well, St. Charles needs more of them. Would like to help with that.
Do you have any specific type of ideas right now or?
Honestly, working on the parks. Uh, I mean, I know we do as much as we possibly can to make them as great as we can, but there are just some simple hazards that, you know, maybe need not be there or maintaining different aspects, you know, by ball courts. You know, something, something relatively, I would hope is simple to, you know, keep them. I absolutely love the Charlestown idea because that's my favorite city outside of St. Charles. That's where we go vacation at Fisherman's Island. And, you know, their downtown is just beautiful. You know, there's no reason that St. Charles can't imitate, you know, the sincerest form of flattering. I mean, they have a great idea. Get kids involved, make them enjoy where they live, where they want to be.
The kayak project will bring people here and that's what we like, exposure and more people.
Right.
Do you have any other ideas to bring people here or even businesses or?
Off the top of my head, not really. I, I love the kayak. I'm glad that we're actually doing that because I've seen one. I think River, Rifle River has one to put in. It was brilliant. But, you know, simple things like, back in the day, I remember having a sucker fishing tournament. You know, many of the kids did one hosted by the Kiwanis there in Chesapeake. And that was hands down just amazing. I mean, it was brilliantly ran, but it was a blast for the children. It got them out there in the parks, experiencing it. And I, I would love to continue to build on that. That's, I think, one of St. Charles' strengths is hosting community events. You know, the Easter, eh, that was a blast. My mom, my wife, both have already, you know, said they want to do it next year. Let them know whatever they need, you know, they're on it. So they might not have to wear the suit.
I, I heard you were already wearing the suit, so that's...
I'm too tall. You can't fit in it. I'm a little bit taller than you.
I fit very well with you.
They already said the suit didn't fit in the back, so I've already been promoted. A little tight. Anything else?
Number four, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next candidate?
I'm next. Hi. My name is Marie Rowe. I live at 12500 Lythic Road. I've lived here most of my life. I think I lived here when I was 12. I had, I graduated from St. Charles. My kids graduated from St. Charles. My grandkids graduated from St. Charles. Now I got a little one, an eight-year-old that's in elementary. And, um, I don't know. I guess this is going to be my dining place. I guess I'll be here forever. Any questions?
Again, is there anything special that you feel you can bring to the Village of St. Charles that we need?
Well...
Within our reaches.
Yeah, within reason. I took my kayak thing. The river, I think we need to utilize our river. We use it in the winter and we use it in the summer. You can go all the way to Bay City on our river. And snowmobiles use it all the time and they bring people here. I, I know it floods. We can't do any flowers or anything like that on the bay. I, I know it floods, we can't do any flowers or anything like that on the banks. I just, I just think we need to utilize that somehow. And I, I, I sit and try to figure out how to do that and I don't know how to do that. But I, I wish we could do something with it. We used to ice skate on it. I know you can't do that now because if somebody ever went through it, you know, we'd be liable. I know you can't do that, but there was so much fun years ago had on that river. And we, the J.C.'s used to make things and float on it, you know, they had a contest on it. They used to do that all the time and you just can't do things like that anymore. So that, that's one thing I'd like to see come. I'd like, I'd like a weight pool. I'd like a weight pad, a splash pad. I, I have liked, I wanted them, one of them for when you got rid of the pool.
Here we go again.
And I know, I bring it up all the time. It's one of my big things is the splash pool and I know we've talked about it. And I know it's expensive, but boy, I'd love to see one of them for our kids.
Where do you think you'd put this splash pad at?
Oh, right back where it used to be.
Right back where the pool was, yeah?
Because there, there was everything there. I don't know if they've removed it or what, but I don't know. It seems like the best place for it if everything's there yet.
I don't, I don't know that either.
Yeah, I don't know.
Be a good place for it, but what else?
Yeah, if I mean, the building's there, I don't know what's there.
Any other questions?
Just, I just asked the St. Charles, may I ask the other ones? Is there anything in the community that you think's not being addressed that you think should be addressed?
With all the stuff that's going on now with higher prices of everything and I know things that are happening now that should never be happening. But I think, and I know we've talked about this too, the protected, protection of our children in our schools, our community, our council needs to be more involved in that. Every inch of us need to be involved in that. Our children need to know that they can go and go to be safe. They need that with all their being. So I think we need to get with the school and somehow make it safe for our children to go to school every day. So I think somehow our council and our community needs to get together because those are our kids going to school. And they need to be safe to be there. And I think we all need to be involved in that. Us, our community, our place, our council, everybody. Anything else?
I believe that's all.
Thank you.
Take a moment, think this over in your mind. Someone feels an urge to make a motion for somebody or?
I move to appoint Marie Rowe.
I'll support that. I'll make a motion to appoint Jamie Kendall.
We've got one motion on the floor right now. We have to take care of that one first.
We have to roll, follow them.
Lois Tiley?
Yes.
Diane Dennis?
Yes.
Richard Horner?
Yes.
Michael Nesbit?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
No.
And Sarah Tiley?
No.
Mrs. Carey? Mrs. Carey? Where do we go from here? Have her step up? Marie?
This will be a four, four-month term until the November election, replacing Mayor Protam Christine Newman.
Come and take your seat.
It must be sworn.
Marie, I gotta swear, I have to swear again. I will be right here. I do solemnly swear, or affirm, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge, the duties in the office of trustee.
And the duties in, what?
The, the duties of the office of trustee.
And the duties in the office of trustee.
In and for the Village of St. Charles.
In and for the Village of St. Charles.
County of Saginaw.
County of Saginaw.
And state of Michigan.
And state of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
And according to the best of my ability.
Okay, moving on to department report. DPDW report, anything done or you got a lot?
No, we'll just kind of, we look at the report. We did one, repair one sewer line on the water service. We did finally get through all the initial phase on water improvement plans, verified everything as best we could. Think we'll be going over with Mitch to make sure we're not missing anything. On the sewer end, we did finish our spring discharge for lagoons. The streets, we just routine patching, sweeping, mowing and brush pickup. And we did haul materials for beautification day this year. And our big project is rebuilding the kiosk. It turned out to be more of a project than what we expected, but I think it turned out nice. We're just waiting on a new sign and it should be complete. We updated all the lighting on it, that all works now, so. You have any questions, comments or concerns?
Any questions to Don?
I would just add that I did ask DPDW about the volleyball net today and somebody stole a part to crank it. They bypassed it to fix it themselves and so we're looking for some parts.
Moving on, police department report.
You'll notice my report looked a little thin. Central dispatch made some changes to their staffing and we don't have those monthly reports coming in, but we'll have those in for next month. I do have some numbers, if you guys have questions, as those, I don't know, I felt like those, those numbers to me are... So I didn't know how important those are to you guys. Excited to hear that our car is in production here in a couple of weeks. So it's only four months behind schedule, so. And we have a young lady that we will, some of you saw on Easter Sunday, that we're gonna offer, hopefully an offer position to, a part-time position here by the 14th of June. So, and we're looking at an opportunity to see if her interests will move toward doing school resource positions. So we're excited to see that happen. At the time that law enforcement right now is tough to find people, good people to come in and, and let them do part-time. So we're excited to, to see her potentially joining us soon and you guys will know in the next few weeks.
How deep are you into the gas, the gas, a lot of money this year, pretty deep already, right?
You know what, I closed my eyes with five dollars a gallon. We're pretty conscientious about typically, law enforcement's always let their vehicle run, in the winter especially. Technology's changed so much that the computers, we don't need to run the whole time. We don't have a lot of things in the cars that requires to run them the whole time. So we've actually, we're very conscientious to not have my cars running if I'm not either on a scene or in them. So I'm hoping to...
It's gotta be hard with the five dollars a gallon.
Save, yeah, and, and more. So, and then of course, the new car is gonna be, is, is dual. So, yep, so that will be a good saver and I think good timing as far as that coming into. Because, yeah, I was gonna get gas. I've heard some scary numbers that I'm not believing.
I didn't believe five dollars either, but here it is.
Thank you.
Julie, are we looking at anything as far as protection for the schools or how far do we go without the schools asking us to do it?
After last year, there is a few incidences in the last year of the school shootings, really around the country and even affecting our state. We've been building a rapport with the school for the last two, two and a half years and have a good, open communication with them. The last superintendent said, hey, we need this in the door this year. So that's kind of, with the communication I had with him, that's kind of been my goal is we're, we need somebody in the school as a resource officer. And it's not, and it's about safety, it's about relationships with kids. It's not about getting kids in trouble, it's not about taking kids to jail, we don't do that. And it's just about, again, what they had talked about is building community and kids knowing, they know who I am. They know who Officer Thompson is. They need to know that they can trust us and they need to know that it's okay. When they see us standing at the school, they don't go, oh no, why are you the taxi anymore? Because they have begun to see us be there. So I've spoken with SROs in other communities and we're looking at trying to come up with a mechanic, a mode of understanding with the school. So there's a little bit of a process. I wish it was as easy as putting them into the school, but we gotta have expectations and the school's gotta have expectations and then understanding of what we're gonna do while we're there and what that looks like. So we're, we're absolutely in the process of doing that. But I'm hoping this school year to have somebody in at least part-time is really a goal. So that'll be a big impact on safety. They're dealing with, he's got a grant that he's working with right now with the school about just safe travels to and from school. So they're working on that, that portion of it. And I know there's been some conversation about safety in the schools. And I know that those talks are there even outside of law enforcement department. So I, I know that's on the mind of administration, staff, teachers, everybody there. So I think this is a good, a good time to...
Does the administration at the school seem quite receptive to the police officers being on the premise?
Yeah, I think it's been a process. I think initially people see cops and they go, oh, the cops there. So I, I'm, I'm being honest. So the last couple of years has honestly been, hey, they see our face, they see our face. We is in uniform, they see us out of uniform. They call us day or night. That whole administration has my cell number and I'm available to them 24/7. They know that anything comes up, questions, current concerns that they have. And just in building that relationship, I think that we're seeing that. But it's changed, right? And people are always, struggle with the idea of change. So I'm sure there'll be hurdles to overcome, but safety is an important issue everyone's dealing with, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Chief Church? If not, let's move on to the building inspector corps enforcement report.
All right, we had a somewhat slow month in May. Forty permits, I did have 11 complaints, a lot of tall grass issues. Five of those 11 have already been resolved, grass is cut and trash is removed. And we're waiting just for the codes to get rewritten, the ordinances. So I can move a little forward faster or more effectively on some enforcement issues. So once that's done, may see a few more on here. Again, it's all complaint based, so I don't go out looking for something, it's gotta be a complaint, but then we'll go from there. Any questions?
I have one, Scott. Who owns the, the old Conway Collision Building? Do you know?
Who's what?
Who owns the old Conway Collision Building?
I'd have to look it up. I can look it up on GIS.
If you know your dress.
Actually hard to do it right now.
Which building is that? Old Conway Collision Building?
Old Conway Collision Building.
December?
That's looking kind of rough these days.
Is that the one on Moore Street?
I was gonna say, I've had it for a while.
Yeah, yep, I've got his information if you, if you want that.
I just wondered if there was gonna be anything done with it, one way or the other.
Yeah, yeah, we...
Fixed up the terraced wall and maybe just...
I, yeah, I can give you a little information, but for sure, I'll, I can pass that on to him. But usually a phone call or a letter to that gentleman and he, they'll get it mowed, but...
Okay, just, I was mainly concerned about the building. Are they gonna, are they doing things?
If you're making that complaint, I can move on. Again, complaint based, gotta have a complaint.
I was just stopping there the other day.
I'm also looking at the one on Chesapeake Street, was it 430?
300 North?
Yep.
It's 430, the one with all the grass in the yard and the mosquito pit?
630, 630 Chesapeake?
Pretty, yeah.
Yep, it's been sold, we're waiting for the new owner, I believe it's been sold, it's listed anyhow. But the sale sign has come down. So we're waiting for new owner to take off on that. Every time I've written them, they've taken care of it, so.
Well, somebody mowed the front of it this time, but they didn't mow enough else.
Well, we've mowed it several times.
Yeah.
Until it was Wellman took it over and then he took care of it the last time, but their sign is down, so.
Anyone else have any questions of Mr. Kendall? Thank you, Scott. Any public comment? Please step up to the podium and introduce yourself.
May I ask permission to stand here because I don't like having my back to people?
Oh, well, you're, you're addressing us, not the people.
Okay, all right, that's fine, that's fine. My name is Deborah Houghton and I am running for Circuit Court Judge. I'm an attorney over in Bertrand. I've had a private practice there since 2009. The seat that is becoming available in Saginaw County is Jim Orchard's seat. His seat does all of the divorce custody and parenting time. So what people need to remember when they're voting for a judge for this seat, I do feel that I'm absolutely by far the most qualified. The reason is, is I have a very, very busy practice in Bertrand. For 70, about 75% of my business has all been divorce custody and parenting time. I also do appeals and divorce custody and parenting time. What's very important as an appeals attorney, we look at the transcripts of a case and we say the judge made a mistake here. The attorney's made a mistake here, this is where the parties made a mistake. So if you've got that talent or you've worked your practice towards that position, you have a lot, you have to have a lot of knowledge in custody and parenting time in order to do that. I'm also on a list with Tuscola County as a guardian ad litem. As guardian ad litem, if there is a very... As guardian ad litem, if there is a very, very testy divorce or custody case, what the judge will do is she will appoint me as a guardian ad litem, which means I meet with the parties, I meet with the children, counselors, whoever is involved in, in this family. I meet and then what I do is I give a written report to the judge. I give her advice on who she should give certain custody or parenting time to. Sometimes it also involves the assets of a divorce. And as guardian ad litem, what I have to do is I have to give her a written report on what decision she should make. But I also have to provide her the law to back that up as to why I feel she should make that particular decision. There's five of us that are running, of the five of us that are running, I do not believe that any of the other four have even close to the experience that I have with custody and parenting time. Should this seat in a couple of years come to something else, right now it does divorce custody and parenting time, but they talk about in a few years, maybe opening up a little bit of civil litigation or some criminal law. I, for the last two years, I have been on the Michigan Assigned Counsel list with Saginaw County, which means that anybody that's considered indigent, they represent me to defend them. I've had hundreds and hundreds of cases in the last two years with Michigan Assigned Counsel in addition to my regular practice that I have in Birch Run. I also have been appointed as guardian ad litem in abuse and neglect cases. I also do appeals in abuse and neglect. Same thing with guardian ad litem, if we have children that are being abused or we think that there's a problem, I would represent the children, sometimes the parents have to do a full investigation and then again have to give reports to the court as to what I feel would be in the best interest of the children. I also have civil litigation and trial experience, including jury trials. And to me, that's very important as a judge, some of the people that are running have never conducted a trial, they've never had one. I know they send you to judge school, they tell you what you should or should not do in a trial, but if you've never done that, I think as a parent, as a mom, as a grandma, that's kind of a scary thought to think that, okay, I'm going for this four-day trial and the person sitting behind the bench has never done a trial. So, that's kind of a scary thought to think of having someone without that experience. I also have a lot of civil litigation experience, I've done construction lawsuits, I've been corporate counsel for multimillion dollar trucking company. I have had a very wide variety of experience. And that's the only reason that I'm applying for this job is because I, I almost feel convicted to apply for this job because I feel that the county of Saginaw and the residents, I feel they need someone that's gonna be respectful, someone that's gonna be fair, somebody that actually reads the paperwork that your attorney submits before you go before the judge. And I just, I just feel that my heart is really into this and I feel that I absolutely by far would be the best candidate for the job. Just to give you a little bit of history of my background, I was born in Roseville, which is a part of Detroit area. When I was nine, we moved out to Armita Romeo area, out into the country. I'm the first one in many generations to graduate from college. My dad, my grandfather and my brother were all shop workers. I know what it is for people to work very hard for their money. It took me eleven years to get through law school. When I started law school, I was in my thirties and I had a nine-week-old baby and an eleven-year-old daughter and I had just found myself newly divorced. So, I was going to law school, juggling children. Halfway through my first year, all of a sudden I got custody of my delinquent niece and nephew and they were teenagers. So, I really had my hands full, but I kept forging ahead between going to Delta College, Saginaw Valley and then Cooley Law School. Took me eleven years to get through school. I made flower arrangements and delivered them to sixty-five stores throughout the state. Sometimes I made flower arrangements till my fingers bled, but that's what I had to do to take care of all four of these kids. I'm happy to say, everybody turned out great. My nephew actually graduated from law school about three years ago and he's working for the prosecutor's office in Saginaw County. I have a small farm in Birch Run, so during the day, I am professional, I wear a suit. When I get home at night, if you stop at the house, I probably have my poopy farm boots on and I'm shoveling goat, goat stuff or cows. So, so I know what it is to be from a small town, I know what it is to be very, very hardworking. And I assure the residents of Saginaw County that I would be giving up a very good practice to do this. So, I want you to know that my heart is into it and I absolutely feel that I would do the best job of all the candidates. What's very important is there's five of us, so you have to vote at the August second primary. They will get rid of three people and two of us will go on to November. Something that I really didn't realize till I started campaigning is when you go to check the ballot, it says you can pick up to two. Don't pick two, just pick one. Because if you pick that second one, it boosts up their votes. So, my last name is spelled K-A-U-T-E-N and I'm the only Deborah that will be on the ballot and I hope that I can have your support. All of my pro bono work for the thirteen years that I've been an attorney and approximately three to four years prior to that is all been for the military. Cooley Law School used to have a program called Service to Soldiers. I used to go to Fort Custer and Camp Grayling. I have written thousands of wills and powers of attorney for deploying soldiers. I'm also listed on the American Bar Association site whenever we have a soldier that comes over from overseas. If they have trouble with parenting time, divorce or custody and they're anywhere near this area, I'm the person that represents them. I'm one of the few attorneys in Saginaw County that has actually done anything with military law with returning soldiers in our family court in Saginaw County. So, there's something else to keep in mind that that's another thing that has added to my experience. Thank you.
Any other public comments or anything? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Jacob, John?
I was waiting, I was waiting for the, for the moment. Okay, me and my wife are here today, I'm John Griffiths, this is my wife, Van. Last year, May twelfth, getting ready to go to work and Van had a heart attack. I'm here today to, to give, I guess, some thanks to, to the municipalities, the fire department and the police department. Especially the police department because if it hadn't been for Julie coming in when she did, I probably, most likely would have started CPR and killed Van because she had a AAA dissection. If you give compression, normally they die. So, she's one out of nine people that die from that every day. And then three of those die from compression when you give them CPR. So, to hand me for Julie coming in and helping out, she would have been dead. And I, it makes me happy. But I just wanna say, you know, you guys got a gem of a chief, police chief and she does a lot for the community. And I'd hate to ever lose her, I think she, I think she's a keeper, you know? So, anyway, that's all I really had to say, I just wanted to make saying, okay?
Thank you, John.
Thank you Julie.
She's due to have another operation this Friday. She's hopefully gonna get three new stents in, or three more stents in. And hopefully that comes out all right, though having to do open surgery. So, she's, she's coming along, this is her first big trip out today in public, so.
She's too young for that.
Wish her the best.
Sixty-four, right?
Is there something else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Nope, we got one.
I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna be the only one that like was just outside the community speaking, so thanks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You broke the ice. My name's Tiffany Erson, I just, I came here primarily because of the school and I'm on the Athletic Association. I've been very involved, my son graduated, my daughter is going to be a sophomore. I'm constantly involved in the school and I, I love it sometimes. I do think that the community be more involved with the school and, and the safety of the school is a huge thing. And I know I'm not the only parent, last, it was last year, I got a text message from my daughter and all it said was, "School shooter." There was something that happened at the school and a big message went around and all the kids thought there was a shooter in St. Charles School. And I cannot tell you, I about broke my computer because I flung myself out of my desk. Things went flying and I-
I'm really glad you weren't on the road that day because I definitely would have got pulled over.
But there's, there's a lot going on in the schools and I know that as a small town, I think part of us feels that we're safer. And I'm telling you right now, our kids don't feel that way at all. And, and I, I won't lie, when the police, when my son was in high school and the police department first started making their, their presence more at the school, it was a little uncomfortable and concerning cause at first we're like, okay, what's going on that we don't know? You know, like, why are, why are the cops of the school? Like, that's how I felt. I didn't know, I felt like that school was kinda hiding something at first, like, was there a reason we should be scared? And the best part for me now is seeing, you know, the officers that are at the games, they're at the football games, they're at the, whenever they can stop in, they're there in uniform. And Julie especially, like Officer Church, the kids will run to her and they feel comfortable. And I think the parents are the same way. I mean, I personally have had a horrible crisis happen at my house with, with one of my kids. And when she came to my house, I instantly was able to relax cause I felt safe. And so did my child. And I think that means the world, having them there, having them present. If it's not her, Officer Ethan, is it Ethan? Thanks to my daughter Toby, has come and plays catch with the kids at school. And I think we need to allow that, we need to see a little more of it, even at the, the football games and when, when it's at all possible. I think it's more that our community, town council, everybody needs to, to kind of look at what's going on everywhere else. Because if we make it too easy because we feel safe as a small town, something bad is gonna happen. But I do, I greatly appreciate, I cannot appreciate it, I cannot wait to see them have a school resource officer because you do see, I mean, the kids now really are starting to become more comfortable with the police. I mean, they don't, you know, if they're walking in the parade or the faces they see, they walk up to and they say hi. You know, they, "Oh, Officer Church" or "Officer Ethan" or "Watch me do this, look how fast I can run," whatever. They wanna show off, they wanna be seen, they're really starting to embrace it. So, I personally cannot wait to have a resource officer at the school because I know now that the parents and the students are really starting to, to feel more comfortable with the idea. And I, you can always tell too, when there is an officer on premises, obviously the children, young, old and the parents, obviously behavior is slightly different. So, I think that's also a good thing. You see less, I don't wanna, bullying, you see less vaping in the bathrooms, you see less, you know, if it could make them a little more timid, they, they respect that authority. So, I just wanna say, I really appreciate all the, the times they have been involved. And I really think it's making a big difference with our kids and their comfort level and I, I really hope we can get that done and get somebody there a little more frequently cause it means a lot to myself, I'm sure other parents and the kids as well. And thank you to Julie and Ethan and, and all the other officers that make, they humanize the badge. And I think that's a big thing. You know, they're not just big scary bad guys, you know, they're humans and they care, they really care about these kids. And I just wanna say thank you and please forward that on because it means a lot. So, that's all, thank you.
So, Tiffany?
Yes, ma'am.
So, you say you think that we should get, as a community also should get involved?
I do.
My question would be to, with you, maybe Julie, maybe the teachers, administrators and everything. How can, like, I have, I've been out of school fifty years this year and I have no kids in school anymore, I have no grandkids in school. How do you think, what could, do you think I could do to get involved?
Like I said before, I'm on the board for the Athletic Association. And something we do, it's kind of like, I didn't really know a lot about y'all's meetings until I, until I started hearing people, and yes, I was raised in Texas, I'm sorry, I apologize to y'all. Until I started hearing more people talk about the meetings and things like that. The Athletic Association is a lot like that. We're all volunteers, we all have, you know, children that are in STC or graduated from STC. We have some people that had grandchildren at STC. But what we do is we're a group of parents and volunteers that get together and we help raise funds for the school. St. Charles is not, does not have a lot of funding. I mean, we're all well, well aware of, of that issue. Like the gator that just was purchased for the football for Leon. It was a pricey item, school can't afford that, but it's definitely needed for the program. And the Athletic Association raised the funds and we paid for half of that gator. There's a lot of things on the, like the baseball, there's things that actually shouldn't be covered by what the Athletic Association does. We're helping the school, but what we do, we run the concession stand. That's us and all the volunteers, we do that. We also do all kinds of different fundraisers, we work at the Dow Event Center. And we always, we're always begging and trying to get more people to come out helping concessions or help, you know, at the games or things like that because you really get to know the kids. We definitely could use more volunteers, you know, raising, helping us. The more volunteers we have, the more events we can do to help raise money for the kids. This is what's paying for the new uniforms. Most of the time when you see a new uniform is cause the Athletic Association paid for it. So, the more volunteers we have, the more we can do for the kids and the school and the programs that they want to build up. And I think that's huge. Our, as far as getting residency, I know people had talked about bringing residents to the communities. My, like, my daughter does competitive cheer and she's, there's issues she doesn't necessarily like about St. Charles Schools and she, every time she looks outward, the one thing that sticks in her mind is how good the competitive cheer team is. She doesn't wanna lose that team. But when you look at parents wanting to bring their kids to our school, they're gonna look at academics and they're gonna look at athletics. And when you come to our softball fields, our baseball field, our football fields, when you come look at our school and you kind of see that it's a little decrepit, we're not doing that well, we're not, we don't have some of the programs that other schools do, it is a setback because we want that for our kids. So, I think that the more we can do for that, it's gonna help bring parents in and kids in and families in. You know, they like the small-town field, but they also want the good academics, they want the good athletics. And so, we, we tell everybody, come out to the school, there's always somewhere to volunteer, always. We have a Facebook page, you can also call the school office, we're more than welcome to have anybody come out and it gets you involved with the kids, gets you involved with the school. There's also multiple school programs that, that need and ask for volunteers. So, and I think the more adults outside are just, that are part of the community come in, I just, I, we could definitely use that help, so.
Do I have you on Facebook?
Uh, possibly, I don't know.
I think I do.
I think you might.
I'll PM you my phone number.
Okay, absolutely. And I usually always share, I've been the secretary of the Athletic Association, so like the Facebook posts and things like that. We try to get things in the announcements and when it's at all possible, but absolutely, come join one of our meetings and it's, it's fun too. We all work well together, we've kind of become a family, so.
I'm so, now I've been out of school for so many years, I don't know.
Well, I didn't either, cause I did not grow up here. And when I first came here to St. Charles, I will tell you right now, I felt like the biggest outsider. And being a part of things like that, it, it really made a big difference.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Sorry if I talked too long. Y'all have a good night.
Hi, Dick Hayden, can't see you, not good. I'm Laura Sue Holcomb, I wanna first of all say thanks to her for doing that thing with my father's driveway. Didn't know it was coming, but I'm glad I'm here tonight. I also wanna touch base, many of you know me as a school board member, I'm not here as that tonight. I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, I need to be sure that's understood. I want to say thank you for bringing to the attention of this school shooter thing, I wasn't aware. As board member of twelve years, unfortunately, I wasn't aware, but I'm not speaking as a board, I may have missed it. So, anything y'all can do to help with that, that'd be great. I do wanna bring to your attention however, to the community, there are four open spots for election this year on the Board of Education. So, I know that the ballots or the petitions need to be in here within the next month or so. We'd love to have some new blood on that board. So, would love to see some of you get involved and bring your ideas and new views. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just wanna clarify real quick, there was no actual, some kids saw something on Snapchat or something and it was somebody holding a gun and somebody said, "School shooter" and then it all got sent out. So, it was primarily just text and, and message-based that got our kids all scared. But we did get a phone call from the school letting us know eventually that everything was cleared up, but it just, it took a few hours. Yeah, there was nothing that actually happened at the school, there was no incident, it was some kid that started it.
Old photo, it was photoshopped.
Yeah, it was, yeah, nothing was actually going on, but the kids didn't know that, yeah.
Yep, yep. The kid in the photo had a mullet and, and to time current, he had his hair shaved, so old photo, but I'll stay out of the details.
I'll just say one thing, I'm your township clerk.
I'll just say one thing. Um, I'm your township clerk.